Dear Lord, thank you for all your blessings, for all your graciousness. We ask you to hold our city, our people, our staff, those who protect us and those of us needing protection in your loving arms, especially during this holy week. Please bring us all closer to you in love. And we particularly ask Easter blessings for all of us in this city, this county, this state, and in our nation. We ask all of this in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. If you'll rise for the pledge, please. I've called to be the order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no request to speak in open forum, so we'll move to item four, the consent agenda. Are there items to be removed from that group of A, B, or C?
Mayor, if we could remove items B and C, just for a quick overview of those two.
Okay. Any others? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the remaining item in the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion of a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Five B, consider approval of a contract between the City of Nacogdoches and Schaumburg and Polk, Inc. for professional engineering services on the 2023 WWTP Clarifier Rehabilitation Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $119,250 Assistant Director of Public Works.
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you just walk us through briefly? I know we're having discussions about two different clarifiers. What does that mean and what are we getting here?
Okay. Clarifiers three and four are the ones we're talking about at the wastewater treatment plant. Clarifier four has failed and is out of service. It was slated for looking at it next year, in the next CIP year, but it didn't quite make it that long. And so we are gonna need to address rehabilitating that as soon as we can. Clarifier three is right next to it. It's also showing signs of issues that are cropping up. And so just in the interest of getting it rehabilitated as well before it fails, we're asking the same contract or the same engineering consultant to just design a rehabilitation scheme for both. Clarifier four is what we're gonna construct first with the design package for clarifier three available when we have more funds in future fiscal years. Schaumburg and Polk designed these originally back in the 90s, and so they've lived their useful life, but they've got kind of a leg up on getting them back in service with the design that they used originally. And so that's why we saw them as the prime candidate to design this project. And it's, we've evaluated their fees. I've looked at their hourly breakdowns. It's all, looks like it's a pretty good deal for the city, honestly, for two clarifier designs, as well as bidding and construction phase services on clarifier four. So we feel comfortable with it as staff. And so we, as I said, we had this project slated for next year for the CIP, so we do not currently have funds in the current year to do this design. And so that's where the second item comes in on the budget amendment ordinance. And so I don't know if that answers all your questions.
No, it does, but there's one little clarifying point that I'd like to make, a clarifier, if you will. Sorry, that's awful. So our intentional, our original plan was to do this engineering design work in the next fiscal year. Was the construction plan for next fiscal year also?
It would, it would have been, yes.
Okay, so that's the only difference. We were going to do this in the next fiscal year. It's just, we need to do it now, so it's, so we're ready to go.
That's what the plan was, yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, that's all I have.
All right.
Do you have any questions on C?
I do not.
Could, could we handle, any other questions from the council? Could we handle those together? Five B and five C? Should we do them? Okay. Do I have a motion on five B?
I make a motion, we approve item five B.
Okay, any, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do I have any, is there any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right.
And I will make a motion to approve item five C.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Second on five C. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that takes us through the consent agenda, and so that'll move us to six, and I'd like to move down to F and hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the fair housing analysis required for application to the 2324 Community Development Block Grant, and that will be presented by Ms. Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Elena Hilton, City Planner. I'm really just introducing Parker Harrison with Grant Works. He's gonna share with you fair housing analysis that's been done in order to satisfy some point requirements for a TDA grant that we're pursuing for some waterline improvements on Martin Luther King Boulevard. So this essentially checks the box to help us be more competitive in that grant process. And so Finance has been working with Grant Works, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Harrison. Now, I did want to clarify that this is different from the housing study that we're working on for the comprehensive plan. This is a much more limited scope, whereas comprehensive plan is looking for, at overall market trends, it's much more expanded in nature. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. So the TDA supports affirmative furthering, excuse me, affirmatively furthering fair housing, AFAH, and has put a scoring element in the application. Housing, race, ethnicity, and disability data comes from the US Census, either the 2010 decennial data or the 2017-21 ACS data. And really, I'm not sure if I need to remove this. So this data here was pulled from the census, those two census portions. And then really that completes the analysis that we've done. We ask that you accept the analysis in support of the upcoming TDA grant that we're currently working on.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, council, do you have questions?
This information is all that's required to be included? Okay, because it does-
For this analysis, yes.
Okay.
This is from the, excuse me, I'm sorry. This is from the 2010 census?
The 2010 and/or the 2017 to 2021 American Community Survey Data, also on the census website.
Thank you.
So there isn't anything, any more current data than the 2010 census for, that, we have a fly up here. He's not trying to hit me, I just want you to know that. For housing by race and ethnicity. I was thinking there was a more current one.
They're working on a more current one. When this data was put together, that data wasn't completed yet, so we've presented you with what we could at the time when getting this information to you.
I had thought I'd seen something more current, but I haven't, didn't look right now. And will it go in just like this, or will you be changing headers and things like that? Or are we mostly accepting the report as it is and you'll put it in?
We're gonna put it in, so for the points that we're trying to accomplish here, this analysis meets what the parameters of what TDA has asked of us. And so what we need to do is basically have the agenda that shows that we presented the analysis to y'all, and in the minutes that shows that that was indeed, and that y'all accepted the analysis as is at this time. Of course, it's not, you know, all the way to date, but we've done, we've used what we could that was presented to us and to the public.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one question. Can you flip back to that previous page? I just know the Cordova's, and I know they've got more than four rental units. Does that matter? I mean, they probably got 50 that are in the Section 8 program. I don't know where that would have come from.
I can look into it and let you know.
Okay. I think just from our, from our, you know, our HUD office, should be able to give you the number of, on there, so.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure it's just in the data wrong, so anyway.
In Oak Hill Plaza?
Yeah, I didn't see Oak Hill Plaza, but it might, does it have a different name now? Is it Commonwealth? No. Yeah, you might look into that also. Oak Hill, that's by Brooks, Quinn, Jones, on the west side of town. I see. All right. Anything else?
I have a procedural question. The agenda item as posted and presented says hold a discussion and give staff direction. Does that give us the flexibility, Mr. Kirkland, to adopt this analysis?
Well, we're at- Yes, council, you can-
That answers my question.
Okay, that's, no vote needed?
Just to accept the analysis as-
Okay, I think just give direction is what it says, and I think we're given direction yet to move forward, maybe with a couple of changes.
Great, can do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to six A, receive an annual report from the Nacogdoches County Expo and Civic Center. Anita Scott, hello.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank y'all for having me today. My name is Anita Scott, and I am the Director for the Nacogdoches County Expo and Civic Center, and my purpose to be here today is to give a brief economic impact report on our 2021-2022 events. Before I get started, though, I always like to recognize my team. They're not present with me today, but their dedication to the venue and to every event held at the facility deserves to be recognized. Operations Coordinator, Ms. Brenda Garrett, and Maintenance Team members Brad Hale, Darrell Hill, and Kent O'Neal, and then Carrie Clifton is also working part-time for us. Our mission is the support of youth, agriculture, and community. However, we are first and foremost identified as an emergency evacuation shelter. From October of 2021 until September of 2022, we hosted a total of 86 separate events. Fifty-eight of those events were one-day events, eight were two-day events, and 20 were multiple-day events. The combination of these events attracted an estimated 77,000 visitors to the Expo and Civic Center. Using the matrix created by Destination International, it estimated our events to generate approximately 630 overnight attendees and a room demand of 266. We also rented 609 RV hookups at the Expo Center, and that is a hard number. The program calculated our direct business sales at $2,241,351, that's gas, mills, retail, recreation, and lodging, and our total economic impact, which includes indirect and induced income, that's monies earned and spent locally, was $3,123,226. And we also supported 2,600 local jobs with our 86 events at the Expo Center. That's always exciting to me. Don't forget to mark your calendars for upcoming events. We have the Evans United Spring Carnival coming April the 13th through the 16th. We also have Old Stone Fort Bike Ride benefiting the Nacogdoches Rotary Club, April the 23rd. And then we'll finish our month with Dudat Barbecue benefiting United Way on April the 30th. You can find more information about events happening at the Expo Center on our Facebook page as contracts are confirmed. You can also go to our website at nacexpo.net, and that's, we have a calendar of events on there, so, and of course, you can also always call us at the Expo Center as well. If you don't have any other questions, you know, I'm done, but if you do, I'll be glad to answer them. If I don't have any answers for you, I'll be glad to get them for you.
Anita, is there any way that we could coordinate your calendar with the CBB calendar? Do those events ever make it to our, to our CBB calendar?
I do, well, I share it with, it used to be Joanna, I don't remember the lady's name, but we do share it with our calendar with theirs, and we do coordinate a lot with them. And so we send our events over to them, especially our really big events, our community-
That's always a challenge, so anything, any work you could do there, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We do work with the CBB. In fact, I want to say thank you to them. They extended us the use of their account with Destinations International to calculate this, this report for you, and so, so yes, we do work with them and glad to have them.
Thank you.
And the chamber as well.
Any, yes, sir.
Could you give me some advice as how far in advance to call, to schedule an event? Because I tried on three different weekends in September.
Yes, sir. September's booked, sir. And we are very booked, and I just had some people come in today looking for September events with the youth rodeos going on. We sometimes can do multiple events, like this past weekend. We had the County Steer Show down in Born 3. We had a team roping in the main arena, and we had Knack Brew Club in the Civic Center. And that's my, me and my little team working and getting all that done. But we, it's, it's, we'll definitely want to work you in if we can, trust me.
No, I know, it was a month and, about six weeks ago when I made a call, I felt like I was a little late.
Yes, sir.
We was gonna do church concerts, so.
Oh, I definitely want a church concert, trust me. So if we can get you in, we're gonna fit you in.
All right.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Councilman Belger, anything?
Oh, I'm just always impressed every year with how much you do, how many events you host, how well you do it, and all your staff. I just, all the events I go to are just run perfectly and without a hitch, and-
We didn't know how we were gonna pull this past weekend off because two of my staff got sick, but I have an amazing, amazing team, and if I talk about them, you'll make me cry because I love my team. They work really, really hard behind the scenes. I'm the face right now, whatever, but I honestly could not do it without them, so.
Thank you for everything.
Absolutely, ma'am. I'm honored, very honored to be in the position that I'm in and to work with the people that I work with. It's a joy. Thank y'all.
Anything else?
Well, just one quick note.
Absolutely.
The Cajun jalapeno stuffed jalapenos?
Oh, yeah.
Because we have that more than one even. They're there at the fairground, but yeah. I think they're from Jacksonville.
They are. He's a sweet man.
Yeah.
Him and his wife are dolls. I love them. They contacted me several years ago, and that's another, you know, it's hard to get in to the food vendor slots because it's small, and so once you get in and you do a good job and everybody likes you, you're gonna be there, you know, they pay, soon as, before it's over with, they're already paying for the next year. And so we're gonna keep Uncle Ray as long as we can. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Anita. We appreciate the report.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to six B, consider approval of a contract between the City of Nacogdoches and Third Kettle Corp., DB Aquametric Sales Company for construction services for the automated meter infrastructure system, water meter, and transmitter replacement project in an amount not to exceed $5,209,100, Director of Finance.
Mayor, Council, tonight, this is a contract to replace our existing automated meter system. Just gonna give you a little bit of a background. The city installed the current AMI system in 2008. One of the shining moments of Nacogdoches, we were one of the very first cities in Texas to install this type of AMI system. Most every city that had it at that point was what's called a drive-by, and so they basically had a computer in their trucks, and they would drive down, up, and down every street, and it would send radio signals. But we went a step above that and decided that we were gonna do the three collector sites around town, and we send our radio signals a lot further than into a car driving on the street. We were, like I said, we were one of the very first ones to do this in Texas, and so we spent a lot of time the first year showing off this to lots of other cities that invested in this after us. We funded that with a revenue bond in, like I said, in 2008, and that was paid off in seven years. In 2016, when we did our rate study, we actually were proactive in this, which is sometimes not the case for us, but we did a good job in this one instance and said, we want to start setting aside money to replace this, knowing that it's coming. And so we built into the rate study the replacement of this so that we could fund it with cash at this point. And so the money has been set aside over, over the last several years to replace this. We are, the contract includes 12,664 meters of various sizes and transmitters to be replaced. This only includes meters that have been in the ground longer than 12 months. If we have changed out your water meter in the last three weeks, it will not be changed. It is still a highly functioning meter. We will put a new radio transmitter on it, but the meter will stay. And so 12,664 is not the total number of meters in town. It is, we've probably estimated about 1,500 meters that have been replaced over, or new meters over the last 12 months or so, so that by the time this is finished, there's no meter in the ground less than two years old. The original quote that we built our budget on was received in April of last year during the budget process, and we're going to also, in a little bit, talk about a budget amendment because like everything else, we have seen price increases every time that we go back and get updated quotes on this, the price is increasing a little bit more each time. There's two pieces to that increase. We've seen about an eight or nine percent increase in material cost. The original meters, just as an example, for the residential meter in April of '22 was selling for about a 123 per meter, and they're 135 now. And so that's, that's what we're seeing across the board, but another item that is probably the larger piece of the necessity for the budget amendment is, we had originally hoped to change out the large meters, anything over two inch, ourselves in-house, because you don't have to actually change the meter, the measuring elements can be changed out in the meter themselves, and we can do that in-house. And so that's what we had anticipated on being able to do. And so what we, what we actually budgeted for was two-inch and smaller. Well, in the year since, we have found that we cannot get parts for most of these meters anymore. And so now the necessity is we're gonna have to actually replace those larger meters, and so when we asked for, for an updated quote, we did have to reply, actually add those, and that was, that was quite a bit of additional funding that we didn't think we were going to have to, have to do at this point last year. So the meter, meter system itself in 2008, when we decided to install it, one of the very first things that the company sat down with us and said, okay, y'all are excited, you're getting all these new meters, but you have to start planning today for the replacement of those meters. And part of that was setting aside the monies to replace it financially, but also a timing of when that is going to be. And so there's a couple of components here. The actual water meters themselves are only warranted for five years. Now, we have always had very, very good luck with meters, and so we do not see a drastic change in meters between five and 10 years old as far as their calibration. And so the transmitters are warranted fully for 10 years, and then another 10 years prorated. And so at the time that we installed the system, we sat down and said, when is the most opportune time for us to start a replacement? Because you don't want to replace them when they're all still, you know, relatively young and fully covered by warranty, so 10 years is too early, but 20 years is too late because everything is old and everything's out of warranty. And so at that point is when we chose around year 15 to start looking at the replacement program, knowing that it takes a year and a half to two years to actually, to complete that. And so that's why this was in this year's budget, because we're on year 15 of the program. Now, during the last 15 years, we have replaced meters as we needed to. If meters or transmitters, either one fail, we do replace those. And I want you to notice that we were starting to see some end-of-life issues. So meters, understand, they're only, they were only warranted for five years, and we're at 15 on a lot of these. The transmitters are warranted at 10, and we're, like I said, at 15 now. So in 2018, we replaced 315 internally, our staff replaced 315 meter transmitters due to failure. Then 450, and then 632, and then 610, and then last year, 830. So you can see, we're starting to see more and more failures as these, these meters get a little bit of age on them. The more concerning thing for us right now is currently, as of the last billing cycle, we have about 1,500 meters that are returning zero reads. Now, some of those are gonna be accurate because during the winter months, people turn off their irrigation meters because they don't use them during the, during the summer, I mean, in the winters. And so some of these are legit zero reads, and the meters are fine, but some of them are stopped-at meters. And so that, that's kind of the numbers that we've been working, like the 830 last year, that would have been, that's, that's how we go through. We take that list and we start replacing them as we need to. But we're sitting now with, you know, more than twice what we had last year as a potential of failure. So understanding that 15 years was our target, 20 years is kind of the latest, we're starting to see meters starting to fail now. And so are we at critical mass? No. We could probably push a little bit. The problem is, is we don't know how much revenue we're losing for those 1,500 meters. Are they, you know, individuals that only use 4,000 or 5,000 gallons a month? We bill them for a minimum bill of 2,000 anyway, so we may be losing a little bit of money, but we could be, they could be a 27,000 gallon a month person. We could be losing considerable. So those are the ones that, you know, our staff is currently trying to get those replaced as fast as we can, but it's becoming to the point that our staff can't keep up with the replacements on the ones that are, that are failing. And so that, that is kind of the impetus of going ahead with this contract now at year 15, is because we're starting to see some of those end-of-life issues. Also in this contract, there's a couple of optional add-ons that I wanted to make you aware of. One thing that came up after we had pretty much, we actually had the contract pretty close to done, Mr. Bartlet came to me and said, hey, we've got a new TCQ, actually EPA requirement related to lead pipes and that type of thing. They're requiring us by October the 16th of 2024 to submit an inventory of service lines, both the city and the customer service lines, which is going to take a physical inventory of every single meter that we have in town. And so the thought was, these people are going to be at the meter, changing out the meter and the transmitter, they're already there, let's see if they would be willing to provide the service and take that inventory and bring that back to us to comply with the EPA requirements. And so they have bid that as a separate add-on to this contract. It is not included in the budget, because like I said, it was something that TCQ sent to us unmandated and how those things go, but we've gotta comply. And so we asked them, and they bid that at $15 per meter location to do the inventory and tracking and submission of that report to us. So that is a piece of here that is not actually tied to the AMI system itself, so I wanted to bring that to you, so you know that that's, that's one piece. There's another optional add-on piece that includes 347 meters that are in the area currently under acquisition, hopefully by ANRA. And so those are not included. ANRA has indicated at this point that they don't want us to update those meters pending this, this potential sale. So, but if they change their mind, they're included, and they can do that. And so they ask us to have that there as an option if they want to do that at some point in the future. That would not be at a cost to the city, that would be a cost to ANRA if they decide they want to do that, but it's covered in the contract, and we can go forward with it without having to go back through the process. So that brings the total contract amount for the actual city's AMI replacement to $4,892,295, that optional TCQ piece of $189,960, and the central heights piece of $126,845, which was the not-to-exceed amount of $2,009, $5,009, whatever, 100, $5,009,100. So there will- So there will be also be a budget amendment separate from this to cover those overages, but that kind of gives you the the low down on on the contract.
All right, okay. Any any public comment? Yes, sir.
I get shocked sometimes reading in the newspaper about the city. Uh I wanna make some comments relative to this five point two million dollar expenditure. And Jan, if it's okay with you, I'm just gonna read my comments in.
Okay, I just need you to state your name.
Huh?
State your name.
Oh, I'm, that was my next step. Uh I've had a couple of city council members ask me about my background lately. Uh I'll tell you, I'm a Regent's Professor Emeritus of Accounting at uh SFA SU. I'm a CPA, I've been a CPA for more than forty years. I've taught at six different colleges, universities, undergraduate accounting major, master's in accounting, PhD fields of study of accounting, economics and finance. And I have considerable consulting uh in forensic accounting and economics as a legal expert witness, so I've sort of been around the block. And I got two points that I'd like to speak on directly or indirectly that deals with this five point two million dollars. Uh bit of background, I've been before this city council at least three times to discuss the profits in the proprietary funds of water, sewer and sanitation. In nice round numbers, we generate a total profit in these funds each year of approximately eleven million dollars plus with a free cash flow of approximately twelve million dollars. In addition, these funds hold about fifty-five million dollars in cash and cash equivalent investments and we continue to transfer absurd fu- absurd funds to the general fund. Budget for this year shows almost five point one million dollars to be transferred, over two million of which is for franchise fees. Staff has told me before that we charge all the other utility providers franchise fees and that's a justification. And I agree that such a fee should be charged. However, the next largest franchise fee in this city is for electric utility and it's a million five three. The total for all of the utilities for franchise fees for electric, cable, gas, telephone, comm, whatever else we got is two point three three five million, which is just a little bit more than what we charge our own utility funds. And that's for all of the other utilities in the city. Uh I think we could make a good case that the franchise fees for water, sewer and sanitation is too much. But that's not all. In addition, we're transferring an additional three million seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh into the general fund. I had a convers- a long conversation with former uh city manager Jeffers and uh about this discuss- this particular point. And his explanation is that we don't have the other sales tax of one percent and therefore we have to get the money from somewhere. Well, yeah, we're getting it, we're getting it from selling water. Uh yep, water rate, uh sewer rates in Nacogdoches are a hidden regressive tax on the citizens for which most are not even aware. Uh just as a sidebar, um every time one of our citizens pays that water bill, forty cents of the dollar that he's paying is not going to produce water. How would you like if you went in Walmarts and you knew that forty cents out of every dollar you gave Walmart was going into Walton's pocket? My first point, apparently at the last council meeting, this is my first point, apparently it's the last council meeting for the news article, a contract was approved in the amount of ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars for a water sewer rate study. And when I read the article, I was rather perturbed that any such discussion should even come up. And particularly the quote of staff, which says, we just need to make sure our rates are covering our operational costs. I hate to say this, but just a cer- cursory view of the financial statements of the city answers that question. Again, we're earning over eleven million dollars per year with a positive cash flow of twelve million dollars out of the water sewer fund in sanit- in sanitation. I highly question the need for a rate study to answer that question. And as far as a rate study, it took me five minutes at most on the internet to access the Texas Municipal League's annual water rate study, which has been done every year with results posted from two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty-two. And if you wanted to hire a consultant, we like to keep money in Nacogdoches, keep it in NAC. Any good economics profit, SFA with a couple of grad students could do the job for a whole lot less than ninety-two thousand dollars. And a final note on water rates, after doing a bit of bit of digging, just on my own volition, I found that the water rates are all over the place for various cities. I happened to pull up Lufkin and it appears we are charging more than Lufkin. But again, data is hard to compare, just as an example. I have a sprinkler system in my lawn and my monthly charge just for having the meter, no water, just the meter, thirty-three dollars and thirteen cents or three hundred and ninety-seven dollars a year that I'm paying to have a meter in the ground. Lufkin charges fourteen dollars and eight cents a month or a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a year, which is two hundred and twenty-eight dollars less than I'm paying. From my searches, I'm probably going to doubt the validity of whatever your consultant comes up with in this water rate study, particularly in light of the fact that he was the prior consultant that resulted in the last water increase. And just to note on that, on ten one two thousand and sixteen, this city, well, not this city council, the former city council, passed increases in water rates for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-one, which we're still operating on. Here is a quote of the lead for that ordinance. Whereas the city has determined that the water and sewer rates as fixed in ordinance number one six five eight dash three dash one four adopted March fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, is that this time inadequate to cover all operation and maintenance caused for water production and distribution and sewage collection and treatment. Emphasis on the inadequate. That statement in that ordinance is absolutely totally false and misleading if you read the financial statements of the city. The same financial situation existed in two thousand and fourteen as exists now and there's simply no way that is a true statement then or now. I look forward to seeing what the city and council is going to do with the consultant's report and the staff recommendations on any water rate increases coming up next year. The proceeding brings me to the current question I have. First, I have looked in the city's detailed budget and I can find no mention of this five point two million dollars being budgeted in the two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year budget. It may be there, I can't find it. This obviously is not a last minute problem and has been under and should have been under study for a long period of time. So why is it not in the original FY twenty-three budget? Or maybe it is and I couldn't find it, as I said. Next question, what's wrong with the old system? Is it a hardware or software problem? Some numbers, old system's gone for fifteen years. We assume a life expectancy, as Ms. Curbo just noted, of approximately fifteen years. That's a cost of the five point two million, that's a cost of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year just for the hardware and software, I guess, to read meters. Could we hire meter readers for a lot cheaper than that? I don't know. Uh will it save money and if so, how much? We've approximately seventeen thousand meters, that's the number I got, it's a little different than what Ms. Curbo showed. Uh that's a cost per meter of this system of three hundred and six bucks. If you'd use a seventeen thousand, if you use the twelve thousand and something, it's a lot more than that. Uh who pays for the cost? More water rate increases? How does the disposal of the central height system impact this project? I would encourage the city council to kick the can down the road on this fo- for further study and possible inclusion in the FY twenty twenty-four budget after careful analysis. I thank you. I would like to say I really appreciate what you guys do. It's hard work, you don't get paid. I really appreciate what the staff does. I know they got a lot of work to do and they work hard at it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Counsel, Ms. Curbo comments, counsel? Questions, thoughts? Yes, ma'am, I see you're ready to go. Go ahead.
I have several, but I may wait. Um I'd like, um I know um Mr. Smith has asked several questions. Um can you clarify some of the things?
So I can I can sum over them. Um the bu- it is in the budget, it's in our capital improvements plan, so it's in the very, very back of the budget document. It's included four point seven seven two million dollars under the water system CIP. Um and so that's where it is in the in the current budget.
So is it it's that money that we have?
Yes, yes, yes.
So we already have
Yes.
all of the
Yes.
the money except for the amendment.
The twenty sixteen water rate study included this project to fund it. And so we set rates to cover and that that's kind of what the water rate study does. We look at operational costs, we look at transfers, we look at depreciation. So pe- pieces of what he's saying is, you know, the eleven million dollars after revenues and expenditures, yes, but we have, that eleven million dollars is allocated to debt service, it's dedicated to uh funding a hundred percent depreciation on our equipment. It's it's a transfer to actually fund future CIP. So one of this is, over the last five, six years of this rate increase that we've had, a portion of that every month is transferred into future CIP to fund this piece. And so the rates not only cover operations and maintenance, but they cover future cost of CIP, cost future, you know, vehicles, all of that stuff is built into those rates. That eleven million dollars difference between operational revenues and operational expenses is the money that is used and transferred into fund capital items, CIP items. Cuz, you know, we've got a lot of CIP items that we've talked about, where we're gonna fund them cash, we're not. That's where that that large cash balance that he's talking about, that's the money we've set aside to fund a portion of the two hundred plus million dollars worth of projects we're looking at. That's what that's for and that's what it was set aside to do, is to do some of this on a cash basis so that we're not looked at, looking at issuing debt for everything that's out there. And that's why we didn't wanna issue debt again for this, so we set aside the rates to to increase incrementally over time to fund this five million dollars when we knew we were gonna need it, you know, at the end of of the life. So that kind of.
Let me just do a one sentence uh summary to see if I've got this right, which is, you said a lot.
I did.
I just wanna be sure that those funds we have set aside from the charges and they're in the capital improvements, they're already there and they're in the utility fund.
In the utility fund.
Is that correct?
Yes. And four, four point seven seven two million is what we have budgeted. So we will have a budget amendment because the the actual cost of the AMI system is the four point eight nine two. So we're going to have a budget amendment uh because what's actually in the twenty-three budget is four point seven.
So that's why the amendment, okay. And I do wanna say um that we have already had pointed out in the audit that our transfers from the utility fund to the general fund are way out of whack.
That is, that's a known thing. And he's right, I mean, Mr. Jeffers, the prior city manager, it's it's a it's a problem that we have had to face here for very, very many years is is, yes, we would love to have a a a smaller transfer in. It's it's finding millions of dollars in the general fund to replace that revenue. It has to come from somewhere and so that's always been an issue.
If I remember, I didn't take the time to go back, which I wanted to, but didn't have it. But it's twenty percent of the utility uh budget or maybe fifty percent.
That's probably close and it's a it's a higher piece in the sanitation fund.
Fifty percent of the profits, so we were talking.
So the way the way that franchise fee is calculated, um it's eight percent of sales in water and eight percent of sewer sales. So we actually look at budgeted water and sewer sales and take a eight percent franchise. Now, in a perfect world, I would prefer to see that at seven percent. That's what most of our um utility franchises are, they're all at a percentage of revenue. Um and seven would be where I would want it to be. If we if we could come up with the the additional general fund revenues to to cover that, I would love to see it at seven percent, but right now it's at eight.
So we are actually subsidizing the general fund with water um rates, which are a regressive kind of tax.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, I have other questions, but the those two I wanted to get off the table right away. And and I will come back to some other things that were.
I'll I'll come back to me.
One question about transmit, transmitters warranty for ten years.
Mm-hmm.
We in the fifteenth year.
Mm-hmm.
And we wanna have them replaced this coming fiscal year.
So we'll we'll start this project pretty quickly um because it takes about sixteen to eighteen months if if we have really good weather um to change all of them because it is, it's a it's a pretty in-depth um process. And so um we're hopeful to have everything done before we get to year seventeen um or eighteen of the of the prorated uh warranty. Once it gets past fifteen, the the amount of the of the warranty is is, I mean, you're talking to forty percent maybe at this point, maybe less than that um on the transmitters themselves. And of course, the meters are completely out of warranty.
When you replace a transmitter, do that warranty on that transmitter start?
Yes, we'll ha- we'll start all over. So everything that's put in the ground new, the meters will have new warranty and so will will the uh transmitters. So that'll all start start fresh. So we won't, we won't be looking at doing this again, hopefully, for another fifteen years.
What has been the issues? Is it software or is it actually a physical?
So we don't, we don't have an issue, there there's no issue at this point. It's a, it's a, it's an end of life thing. And so like I said, we're starting to see meters stop. And when meters stop, all, you're only gonna get billed a minimum bill every month. So if you use twenty thousand gallons, you're only gonna get billed a minimum bill, which is only for two. And so that's not a big loss if you're talking a handful of folks. But when you get thousands of people are not paying for the water that they're using, that becomes a big issue. And so the older they get, the slower those meters actually, the the calibration gets off. And you can be off ten to fifteen percent by the time they get um fifteen years old. And so it it's becoming a proactive thing. Before we get to the point where we have system-wide failure, we start this replacement program. Um and so that's why fifteen years was chosen as it's kind of in the between of the of the prorated warranty. Um and like I said, we're starting to see those numbers, you know, creep up as to what we're actually replacing every year. Um it's actually this year, the eight hundred meters that they replace this year kind of is at the breaking point for the staff that we have to do. Um they really have really been out there working really hard because that's that's a little more than they really comfortably can do in a year. And so knowing that we have another, you know, thousand to fifteen hundred sitting out there that potentially need to be changed out um is it's kind of scary on our end knowing, cuz we gotta, we've gotta get to them, we gotta get them changed. We can't have meters out there that we know are not operating um because we know we're losing revenue in in that situation.
And is that a updated, upgraded meter transmitter that we're replacing?
So we, last, a couple of years ago, we replaced the actual collector sites, which is another piece of this. And so the the software is still really, we've updated software, we've updated the collector points. So now it's just the radios that transmit from the meters, those are not, those are the ones that are under warranty. The other pieces of the system are all relatively new um and so uh we're good in that regard. Um it's just at this point, we've gotta get to the to the actual meters and 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 transmitters uh in the ground.
Is this considered a fixed network, is that?
Yeah, it it, I'm sorry, that fly is getting on my nerves too. Um yeah, so this is a fixed based system. And so what that means is is there is actually a fixed collector, big computer, I don't know, is it that's why? That is actually reading those radio waves all over town. There's only three of them, it covers, they they have excellent range. They cover, you know, a s- and with our terrain, we were kind of scared that, you know, with as much, many hills, that we wouldn't get good reads. We don't have a problem, they they read very, very well, so.
So we don't have to do any type drive-by or walk-by?
The only time that our guys go to those meters is if we have a problem with the meter or somebody needs, you know, something turned off for for repairs or they need to replace a a stopped up meter. But yeah, they don't go meter to meter anymore.
And they, is this tough of me to give you a warning if there's?
So our system gives you all kinds of stuff. Um so we we get reads every hour. Um and so it it, I had, you can set it up to to monitor like, so if if you want to know, hey, I've used more than a thousand gallons today, something's up. And I had mine set that way last summer. And it it, I left a sprinkler on all night long and I got up the next morning to three or four text messages and an email and said, hey, something's wrong. And I looked out the back door and went, I'd left the sprinkler on my mine. So you, yeah, we have that capability and it tells you if if something's going on with your meter. It tells us, but it can tell you as well if 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 you choose to to sign up for that.
I, and I did sign up, I had to change my plan.
Oh, yeah.
Because if you wash three loads of clothes.
I've I've done that, I was getting e- text all the time and I've got teenage boys, I'm like, that's not, I got to use more than that. So yeah, I did the same thing, but it's a pretty cool system.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um thank you for the um thorough explanation on why staff is proposing to start these replacements now. Um okay, so we have the four point seven, we have that in cash. And how much more are we needing?
Well, we have set aside, we we built in was was five and a half cuz we we initially did debt for five point four and we said, we're gonna have at least that going forward. Now, there was a lot more that we did, the big collectors and that stuff. So we have the money there, we only allocated four point seven this year to it. So you will need a budget amendment for that additional amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but the money is there.
But the money is there, okay. Um, and then Dr. Smith, in his comments made a, mentioned that, that the Texas Municipal League publishes its own utility rate study. Could you speak to that comment, please?
So we, we use that a lot. I know that the, the Capital Needs Committee is, has, has been provided a copy of that. I think Mr. Bartlett gave them a copy of that not long ago. Basically, what it does every year, TML sends out to all cities a survey and says, tell us, what do you bill for a three-quarter inch meter, for, what's your minimum charge? What do you bill, you know, what's an estimated bill if they use ten thousand gallons, just a bunch of scenarios? And they collect that from cities all over the state. And then they will compile that and say, this is, you know, this is an average for a city in this, this population bandwidth. This is what the average is, and then it will actually list by city, what's, you know, a, a two thousand gallon water bill is going to be this much at this city. And you can compare. So that gives you a good idea of what everybody's at, what the, what the utility rate study is, is it comes in and looks at Nakadoches specific. What, what do we have that we have to cover with our revenues? What do we, what do our rates have to generate? And so it looks at our debt, it looks at our maintenance on our, actual maintenance on our plants. What, all this stuff that we've got, the capital needs that are going forward, they're going to look at what the Capital Needs Committee brings to y'all and says, okay, the committee, and now the council has decided we're going to do X, Y, and Z with cash in years two, three, and four. They're going to build that into it and say, we've got to set aside enough money with this rate to fund that. And so there's a lot more that goes into that. I did want to, to let Mr., or Dr. Smith know that we did send a copy of the RFP for the rate study to the college. Dr. Herzog actually wanted to do that, he was going to get with some folks at, at, I don't know if it was in his department or, or the economics department. But we did send a copy of that over to see if anybody would be willing to, to do that. And so we didn't, like I said, we didn't receive, but, but this one response. But there's a lot that goes into it, they look at weather patterns, they, I mean, they, it's very tied to what is Nakadoches and what is our needs. Because it's easy to look and say, we bill ten dollars and they bill twelve dollars, but they have to know that we have a, you know, a new wastewater plant that we're trying to pay for, or maybe they don't yet. And so that, that's kind of the difference in, in the rate studies. It's not just comparing rates from city to city, it's actually looking at us and our individual unique needs and setting those rates to cover what we need for Nakadoches, and that's kind of the difference there.
Okay, and then one last question is regarding the inter-fund transfers. You mentioned that in your perfect world, we would be charging seven percent franchise fees, not eight percent. And so if we were to drop it to seven percent, just ballpark figure, how much money would we have to come up with?
Since last budget year, um, God. I, I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, so let's see, it's twenty million, so. On the utility side, would be a couple of hundred thousand dol-, uh, utility and sanitation, or water, sewer and sanitation both would probably be a three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease, which on the general fund side, in order to make that up, you're talking a penny on the tax rate.
That's what I was asking, okay, thank you.
Sure. Make sure my mic comes on. I have, I've spent a lot of time with you talking about this, and I, I was, truthfully, to the rest of council, I was struggling with this, just because it's a big number. I mean, that's a lot of money to spend on any one thing, and the, it's set aside, that part, I could, I could jump over that hurdle. It's the... Do we need to change the meters now and the transmitters now? Do we need to change just the meters? Do we need to change just the transmitters? And that's not my area of expertise, but we discussed that at length. And we could rehash all of that. One of the, one of the questions that I think we can answer on Dr. Smith's questions regarding the irrigation cost, thirty-four dollars a month, that's not our three-quarter inch cost, right?
That's, that's going to be a larger, most of the irrigation are maybe a one-inch meter, so it depends, because that is based on meter size, and so, because that's demand on the system. And so those larger meters, the minimums are much higher than, than a three-quarter inch meter. So I would assume it's probably a one-inch meter, but I would have to look.
Because I know mine's three-quarter, and I pay thirteen a month, there's the minimum on mine.
The, the meter sizes make the difference there.
So I know I told you this earlier, one of the most compelling parts to me on this, to, to get me in the direction of saying we need to do this now, could you go back?
Sure.
To that slide? The fact that we're, we're currently replacing nearly a thousand meters, and we know that we have fifteen hundred meters coming up, that we don't know for sure if they're clogged up or what the issue is. That is what convinces me that we probably need to do this now, because what does next year look like? Is it two thousand, is it three? But I still go back to that question, we could change the meters out, and our transmitters would still work, right?
Yes, but I, I will, I will tell you, and this, I, I talked to BD, the utility billing manager, after we spoke earlier, we're starting to see the transmitters fail at, at pretty much the same rate as the meters. And that is not something that, in the past, it's all meter change. And now we're starting to see more and more of the, just the transmitters falling. I think this last year, we had just four hundred transmitters failing, which normally you don't have any transmitters failing, and so we're starting to see that, too. Now, does that mean that this is the year that everything's going to fall apart? Who knows, but we're starting to see it. So it may be two or three years before it gets to critical, but it may not. It, it, this may be, you know, we may go from six hundred to eight hundred to twelve hundred next year to, to, who, we don't know. Because when they start failing, they're going to exponentially increase. And so is that this year or next year? I don't really know.
And, and what level of risk are we willing to assume?
Right, what are we willing to take, yeah.
Because what happens when five thousand fail in a week? And we're really talking, failure in this case for the transmitters, it's batteries, right? The batteries in those fail, and they stop transmitting data to us, so we're not generating any revenue on those.
The, the meters are still running, as long as the meter doesn't stop up, it's just we're not able to get those reads. And so at that point, if we do have a critical failure of the system, and that would be of the radio system, we do not have any mechanism in place to manually read those now, so we would have to scramble, figure out some way to, to, to get some kind of computer system up and running to get out there and get those reads in the interim, and I think we talked about this a little bit. What we would be forced to do would be to, to estimate bills for folks, take the last six months or whatever, and send estimated bills until we can get those reads, because the reads are out there. We're just not able to get them into the billing system. And so at some point, there would be a true-up in the future, but we might have multiple months that we have to send estimated bills. And that's, that's great, except for when we true-up, and then somebody's gotten a fifty-dollar bill and a fifty-dollar bill, and all of a sudden they get a three hundred dollar bill because our estimates were low. And so, like I said, it's, it's all, it's all risk assessment. What are we willing to, to do? Do we want to go ahead and do it now? Do we want to wait a year and see? It, it's, it's really how much risk you're willing to, to put out there, knowing that we do have the money. But like you said, I mean, you know, if, if you wanted to invest it for another year and, and see what interest earnings you can get on it and roll the dice, we can definitely do that. It just becomes part of, of what, how much you're willing to, to risk a failure, a system failure.
I probably have more, but the, the one thing that I want to make sure that I articulate is that we were able to get better information because of the discussion that you and I had.
Most definitely.
And so asking those questions, our staff is really good about answering. I've spent hours on this, not to, not to brag, I'm just saying that.
No, no, no.
That our staff has always been extremely helpful to me in that way. I just, on the other side, as, with a fiduciary responsibility, I just want to make sure that we are getting every ounce out of every penny we spend. And so it, it has been a struggle for me, and, and you know that as well as anyone does.
Yep, no, you're good.
I'm sure there will be more, thank you.
Okay, I'll pick up on my questions again, but before I, before I ask my questions, I failed to say something right at the beginning, and that's how much I appreciate Dr. Smith's questions. And he, he helps me to think through a lot of things. And I just wanted to tell you, Dr. Smith, I really appreciate your thoughts and the time and the research you put into the, and, and everybody, all of the people who come here, the questions that you ask us. We can do a better job for all of you when you look at what's on the, the council's agenda. So I, I, I wanted to start out with that, I meant to start out with that before. Okay, having started out with that, so on the water, on the, on these, replacing the equipment, you talked in here that some of these things are only two years old and we'll be replacing them, or?
No, no, those are the ones we won't. So what we, the only, the only thing covered under this contract is any meters that are more than twelve months old right now, okay? As of, as of now, they're more than twelve months old. So anything that we've put in the ground the last twelve months are not included in here, they're not going to be changed. We're going to leave those meters in place. This is about a twelve, no, about a fourteen to sixteen, eighteen-month process. So by the time they all get in the ground, we're going to have some meters that were put in in the last twelve months that are, that are eighteen to twenty-four months old. They're, they're still within a really good useful life, so they're not being replaced. We're only replacing the older ones. So, but now all the transmitters will be replaced, because they're, they're, well, that may not be true, too, let me back up. If the transmitters have been put in the ground recently, we're not going, anything that is new, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to ask my guys to go out and, today, they entered, they put one in today, and say, okay, we signed the contract, we're going to replace it tomorrow. That, that's not prudent. And so nothing that will, has been put in the last twelve months is going to be replaced with this particular contract.
So the question I asked is, if we have equipment that's two years old, that is older than the twelve months, then that will be replaced?
They will be replaced, yes.
And I had been reading studies, I don't know how old this is from the Wastewater Digest, but, and it talked about the, the timeframe that was really most economical to replace was between twenty to twenty-five years. That at fifteen, you start losing some, but then it, you really, from twenty to twenty-five years, that's when you really are losing it. And now this study was done in, I want to say, Virginia, and, you know, it just, they were just looking at, at theirs.
Is that, is that meters or is that transmitters, or both?
I think it's both, but they were talking specifically about meters, so.
Maybe not, I wonder if it's electronic meters, you think? If it's older, it may, it may not be, just thought.
I, I don't know, I've just, and, and this is just one study, so I mean, there may be a zillion other studies that say you should re- but, but, and I did a cursory study with, not through a university library, but through Google. So, you know, which I always have to look, but anyway, just, I'm, I'm sure there is some kind of, of information about, you know, the optimum time to start replacing them. But if we're replacing all of them, and some of them are only two years old, that makes me question if that really is the best use of our dollars, so. And I don't know how many of them are two years old, I don't know how many are five years old, but it's a big difference between fifteen.
Well, we can pretty much back into it for most parts, because we can tell you what we've, what we've replaced in the last several years.
So, so I'm thinking we might want to look into that and think about that option, to replace the oldest ones. But then that brings my question up, what are the cost savings for replacing everything all at once, rather than replacing them over a period of time?
So, so that was one thing that we looked at in two thousand and eight as well, is because we had to have that meter replacement program pretty much in place, because we don't want to wait till the last minute and say, oh, we're twenty years into this, and we hadn't even thought about replacing them. And so, like I said, there, when, when they come in to do this replacement, there will be crews upon crews upon crews all over town at the same time. We have four guys that do all service work. They will have dozens of people in town doing this, and it's still going to take twelve to eighteen months to do this, twelve, sixteen months, something like that. It is a very, very big undertaking. If we were to do this in-house ourselves, over, you know, trying to do it a year at a time, we would probably end up having to double or quadruple our staff, and we would literally be doing this every year from now on. It would be a constant replacement. Now, that is always an option, instead of doing a full system-wide, you know, every fifteen to twenty years, it's something that, that we can definitely look into going forward. At this point, it's, it's a little late in the game to do that, because we're fifteen years in and we haven't started that process. And so if we were going to do a, a replacement program ourselves, we would probably start that at like year ten and start a really aggressive two to three thousand meters a year change-out to get it done by year fifteen. And so, I mean, it's something that we can look at, certainly, but like I said, it's not something we can do with current staff. So it, we, we would require an entire crew for this, to do this ongoing, going forward, if that makes sense.
Let me restate my question. If we actually contracted over a period of several years and replaced the oldest equipment now, and then, you know, two years later, replaced older equipment, what is, I understand the, doing it in-house versus contracting it. And, and by the way, I, at five million dollars, I mean, we could easily think about staff.
Well, the majority of that is, is, is material cost. It's, it's not, it's not, it's, it's mostly, it's mostly material cost. You're talking three, four hundred, I mean, four million, four point five, four point six, that is materials. And, and the installation itself, that piece is, what, seven or eight hundred thousand? So those costs, you're going to estimate that, that four million dollars in meters, if you're going to do it over the next ten years, is not going to be four million dollars, because we already know in thirty days, our, our price has gone up a dollar or something per meter in the last thirty days. So if we're going to do it over time, that cost probably is going to go up, because meters today are not going to be the same price as meters next year. Now, the piece of that would be the, would be the labor piece. So, yeah, we could choose to go in and say, we want to change out every meter that's over ten years old and do just a contract for that, and then come back in a couple of years and do what's ten years old at that point. Once we do that, though, we kind of pretty much need to commit to that as a long-term plan, because then it becomes a, a very difficult thing to do a whole system reset, because you've got, you've got ages all over the place. Right now, the majority of our system is fifteen years old, and there's a small piece of it that's not fifteen years old. Like on our bigger meters, right now, there's sixty meters that are over three inches, over two inches, they're all from two thousand and eight. We've replaced a couple of meters ourselves in the last few years, the big ones, but all of these are fifteen-year-old meters. So those on all still have to be replaced, under this, this idea that we're not going to do the ones that are, are, you know, the last few years. So could we save a little bit money and say, we're going to do everything over five years? Yes, we can do that. We'll just have to go back through and pull out how many of those meters we're not going to do now. But now they're going to be out of warranty if they're five years old, so there's no warranty on the meter. So now it's just like going forward and saying, we're going to look at those in five more years, and we'll look at, and just kind of have a, a, you know, just like rolling risk assessment on that. But that's definitely, that's definitely something that we can do.
And I, I think in talking with Mr. Bartlett, and he was very, you're right, I mean, our staff are very kind to call us back and answer questions. I think he actually called me from a personal situation. But we should be able to expect these meters to last at least twelve years, you know, and then on. So, so instead of, to me, the equipment, saying, equipment's cheaper now, well, we've got another ten years, we may have entirely different equipment from a two-year-old piece of equipment. I, I think that would be very, it, it would be helpful to look into that, into those time periods, to see if we want to do everything. Is the system reset, when you're talking about a system reset, rather than having gradual, you know, replacement, explain a system reset to me, I mean, what, is it our software or something that why we should?
Maybe I'm not recalling this reset piece, just a system-wide change-out is what I'm talking about, like everything at once.
Yeah, right, and so that, is that a software issue that makes it better, or, I'm trying to wrap my brain around why?
No, it's, it's, it's right now, we're looking at the majority of our system is fifteen years old, the majority of it. So of, of the meters that we have that we're looking at, the majority of those are, are fifteen years old. Now, we have some that are twelve and some that are four, depending on, you know, how many we've replaced. Two hundred this year, so there's going to be two hundred that are thirteen years old, and five hundred that are twelve years old, or whatever. But the majority of the system, as it is today, is the two thousand and eight system.
So that would be very helpful to me to know what percentages we're talking about. And the other thing is, what, what actually happens with a system failure? It's my understanding from what you said, but maybe I'm misunderstanding this, that if my... that if my water meter breaks, it's not like I'm going to get my water free.
So if your meter, if your meter breaks, it does. Because you're not, we're not measuring any water going through there, so yes.
But you are not, but I think you said something about.
That's on the transmitter. That's the transmitter. If the transmitter goes bad, so if the battery goes out in the transmitter, your water meter is still registering, we're just not able to get those reads. So when your meter goes out, yes, you're getting free water. When the radio goes out, you're not, because we're eventually going to get that read, and then you're going to get a bill for it. So it's, it's two different things. One, one matters with the billing and one.
The loss, that's, that's what I'm wondering about, the risk that we have. Okay, that, those are, I know I have a, oh. Uh, um, that's all on the water, that, and I'm, and I think I would like a little bit more information and some time to digest it. And I like the idea of us all being able to discuss high-dollar, um, um, budget items and maybe possibly voting on it again in the, in another future meeting. I'm just throwing that out. Um, I do have a question on the water study, uh, um, if, do you want to come back to me on the, on the rate study? The rate study?
I don't know that we can talk about that under this item.
Well, it, it's a point of, uh, let me just ask if, if that's already, uh, a done deal. I know we voted on it.
Yeah, we've already executed that contract.
And you've executed, that's all I, okay, so we can't do anything on that. That answered my question.
And we've already started.
That's all right, that's all right. Uh, uh, there was some good comments and I thought, you know.
Gotcha.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to jump back in, um, for just a second. I agree with you that the majority of our meters are probably 2008-era meters. Just on those that we've replaced, though, is over 20%. So we're going to replace 20% of our meters that have been in the ground less than five years. So, I mean, that would be significant cost savings. Now, I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but it is 20% of the meters that are, I mean, that's just from adding those totals. There aren't many times where I, I feel like I don't know the right answer, um, after we have these discussions. Uh, it, it's clear to me that we're going to have continually more meters to be replaced. The ones that haven't been replaced need to be replaced. But I'm not sure about the ones that were placed in 2019, if those, I mean, maybe we get transmitters on those, but not a wholesale do-everything. That's just, just my two cents.
And thank you for all this.
Comments, yes?
Yeah, I wanted a clarification on, um, Councilmember Hugoby's question. Were you saying that 20% of the meters under the current proposed replacement, 20% of the ones that we are replacing have been in the ground for two years or less?
Not two years or less, five years or less.
Five years or less.
So, that's just, those are round, assuming 13,000 total meters. It's, that's not the exact number, but, but using the exact number that I calculated from here is 22%. So I'm saying around 22, 20% is, have been in the ground less than five years.
If you take this group right here.
Yeah, you can just take that grouping, that's the ones we replaced in the last five years, that's pretty close.
And the transmitter's warranty is 10 years?
So the transmitter warranty is 10 years full, 10 years prorated, and the meters are five. So if, if we were to go back and say, we only want to replace everything in the ground that's over five years old, then we can do that. Then the ones that we don't replace, you're going to have a piece of those that are, that have no warranty remaining, which is not a, a huge issue with water meters, because we don't see them go bad. Five years is the warranty, but it's kind of like a Toyota. You may be warranted for 60,000 miles, but mine has 254,000 on it today, knock on wood. So, it, it, they will last you more than five years. Uh, but they're only warranted, and we only have the, the ability to replace them for free in those first five years. So you're going to have, you're going to have that five-year period that you're not going to have warranty on those, on those meters going forward, where you do everything else. Um, is that a, is that a deal breaker? Not at all. Um, it's, it's, like I said, it's, 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 it's risk. You, you decide if you want, um, your, your entire system under warranty at once or a piece of it. So I mean, if that's what we want to do, if we want to look at, instead of 12-month as the, the delineation, if we want to choose 60, then we can go back and, and, and pull that, and, and then get a, um, updated, um, quote contract from, from Aquametric, and bring it back.
Is it warranted parts and labor?
Um, no, we, we would do our own, uh, once they've done the installation, they're gone, then we, it's on us to, to do any of the fixing. So our, our folks do all of the, of the repair and replacement after the, the initial installation.
Which is part.
Yep.
So, so I would like to not just talk about when it's under warranty, because nothing I have read in anything has said we should replace them after they're out of warranty. But, um, this study, and I think that can, and, and I don't want to put words into Mr. Bartlett's mouth, but, um, I think he was, if I remember it, he was talking about around 12 years, then you start to see things. Um, so at least, I would rather us, uh, take another look at at least the, not, um, replacing the ones between, um, to, um, either 12 or two and 10, because you're saying this is going to take two years. So, uh, that would be a substantial cost savings, and then we can take those dollars, and then in two years or, or, or.
So, yeah, that was going to be my next question. If, if we choose to go all the way to 10 years, then part of that is going to be understanding that every year, we're going to have to go and say, now we're going, and we're going to be basically going through, instead of a system-wide change, we're going to start that process of doing it annually for those that are, are hitting that next year mark going forward, you know what I mean?
Yes, but, but the reason I said at least, you know, 10, is to give the two years, so you definitely don't have to do it for the next two years. But maybe every three or four years, we can start looking at them. And part of that is because if we're going to replace it, I would, I mean, I'd like to have the newer equipment when it's needed, because it will change, I mean, when we go to 10.
So one of, one of the things that I'll need to verify with, with the, with the, um, with Aquametric is, um, is the ability to, to do a system change installation with them for a smaller number of meters. So, let's say we do 8,000 now, but in two or three years, we just need 1,500 done. 1,500 is more than we can do ourselves. Will they contract for that? Because they have to mobilize and come in, I don't know. And so that would be something that we would have to find out if they're even willing to do that type of small install going forward every two to three years.
And, and perhaps we do need to think about staff, I mean, for smaller numbers. I mean, uh, 700,000, even though that's labor, I mean, that's a, that's a lot of staff.
Yep, it is.
So I, I'm, I, I think it might be worth our while to get answers to those questions before we actually, you know.
So, that, that gives me some direction on, on re, relooking at this, but we, we do also need to cover the, um, TCQ EPA requirement that's included here. Is that something we want to continue looking at, including in this contract, or, or what? Because that's, that was an optional add-in, and so, we haven't really discussed that tonight.
We don't have a choice on that, do we?
No, it has to be done, it's just whether we do it through, through these people or some other avenue.
So my question on that is, if we're not installing, say, we're not installing 4,000 meters.
They're, they're not going to be at that meter.
It's not going to be $15 a.
No, they'll, they'll charge us more, because they're not going to be at those 4,000 meters that we're going to exclude from here. They'll, they'll, they'll end up probably increasing that price, I would assume.
The reason why we were doing, adding this on is just so we didn't have to bid it out a second time, right?
Second, well, it's, yeah, they're going to be at every meter, and that keeps from having two different companies at every single meter over the next two years. Since they were going to be there, it was, it was just, um, it was just an economy of scale. But we can definitely, you know, separate that out and do a separate contract if, if we, if we choose to. If we don't want to go a full contract with here.
I think Mr. Kirkland has a comment.
I think he's on mute.
Is he talking? I can't see because of it.
I think I see movement. While we're waiting, while we're waiting, I, um, I'm, I'm wondering if that partic, I understand the, you know, the ease of having somebody else do it, but we might have even local, I, I don't know what's involved in that, just checking it out. And we might, I would prefer to have local, you know, plumbers or local, you know, if it's possible to do it at so much a meter.
So our Assistant, um, Public Works Director Case might can speak to that. I know he's, he's got a couple of companies that, that he might have in mind. I'm not sure if they're local.
I always try to, you know, steer to local, thank you.
Hi, Assistant Director of Public Works, Case Offerman. Uh, we have, uh, had offers, because this, uh, this newest legislation came out a couple of months ago. Since then, uh, and to be clear, the, and I think it's in your presentation maybe, but, um, the inventory for this lead, uh, line, uh, inventory is a year and a half away. We've got to have it all inventoried and basically a plan of action for anything we do find, uh, turned into the EPA, uh, by October of '24. So, um, to answer your question, we've had several consultants just reach out, because that's what they do when legislation like this comes down, and, uh, and basically say, hey, we'd love to come visit with you and talk about, you know, your, your inventory on your lead and copper rule, uh, revision stuff. So, um, we have, we knew we were talking to this company right here, uh, because they were already going to be there, uh, doing it, and the, the economy of scale, as Pam said, uh, makes a lot of sense from that aspect. So, we have not pursued, um, discussions with any other consultants at this time, but, um, they are out there. Uh, I haven't heard from anybody local, uh, yet, but these have been, uh, consultants, uh, engineering consultants and the like, um, or other, you know, risk management-type companies that, uh, aren't local, but we've, you know, worked with them in the past, so. Um, you know, that's, that's an option. If, if we don't decide to go this way tonight, uh, we can, uh, basically go out for proposals on that kind of thing, but, um, it could, it could be in the several hundred thousand dollar range is what I would guess, just off the top of my head, so.
I, I have a question, if I could, for Mr. Offerman. Well, you may have said this, and so, for, forgive me if I, if you have, and I missed it. What, what sort of licenses do you have to have to make these identifications? Is there?
We are actually, uh, myself and, um, our Water Utilities Manager and Assistant Manager are all three going to a workshop in Tyler tomorrow, uh, over this lead and copper rule, um, revision. And so, um, we're going to get a lot more information on that, uh, tomorrow, hopefully. We don't have a whole lot of information at this point, um, it's, it's still fairly new, uh, legislation. So we've been trying to digest it, um, but we're hoping to get a lot more clarification tomorrow. So, um, I don't know that an engineer is required. Uh, these folks aren't engineers, um, but we do need somebody that knows what they're looking for. Uh, so, there may be some direction from EPA on that, but we'll, we'll find out and be happy to share that with you when we have information.
Excellent. Okay, anybody else, any other comments? Do I have a motion on, uh, 6B? I think you've probably seen Mr. Kirkland's comments like I have. Whatever we do, we probably need to, we need to vote on that.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to, um, make the motion that we delay this contract, um, pending further information and, um, uh, study about options, uh, including the, uh, the lead, you know, training that they'll be going to. And Mr. Kirkland, I'm sorry you're not here to clean up my motion, but basically my motion is to delay this contract until we have further information. That's it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I, we may need a clarification of when we're delaying to.
Yes, I'm sorry, we need a certain, a certain date, I believe.
So, so just from, from, from my standpoint, um, if, if we're going to say, this is when we're going to bring a contract back, I need a little more direction on five years, 10 years? Where do we want to make that breaking point? Because I'm going to have to ask them to rebid based on a different number of, of meters that we have to provide. So, we would have to have some idea of, of, um.
Mr. Kirkland said it wasn't necessary to have a certain date, if you read his chat, just to a future city council.
But just to give Pam some direction.
But I, but for me to start working on this, now, if I don't have to have a, a contract back to, in front of you, then I can do five years, I can do 10 years, and I can show you all some, but I won't actually have a bid from those. We'll just use this bid as an estimate, based on what they bid. This is what we could expect if we're doing 11, I mean, uh, 8,000 meters instead of, of 11,000 or something like that. And then, the further we get into it, then we can have them rebid it. Because it's only good, the bid's only good for 30 days. And so we would have to have a good idea of what we want them to bid on, and that's, that's kind of some of the stuff that I can bring back to you. Now, I can bring that back on, on the next, well, the next meeting, I'll be at JFOT, but, um, I can get it to you that meeting.
So, so our two questions are the money and the contract, but the other is the process and what might be, you know, a reasonable process, including, um, the training you're, where are you? Okay, okay, so, oh, back there, sorry, you were hiding. Anyway, including the, uh, you don't have to get up, but including the information you're going to bring back about whether, you know, that might be done separately and what kind of, um, a training you might have to have. So I think.
I feel, I feel like if we're going to not replace the majority of our meters, that it's probably going to require a separate contract for somebody else, because these people are not going to be at every meter. If they're only going to see, you know, half of our meters, then, then I don't know that they would, would go out of their way to take that inventory in that place.
Majority is, you already said, 15 years anyway, right?
Yeah, and that, that's, those are the numbers I'm going to give to you. And so we have an update on by meter size, which ones are old, and which ones are 10 years old, and which ones are five years old. And, and we can start working on pulling that, pulling that data tomorrow.
Okay, you have a motion, and I have a second, without a certain date, she indicates it'd be next meeting.
Well, next meeting, what I, what I can present to y'all next meeting is how, our age of our meters. So I can tell you, we have this many meters that are 15 years, and this many meters that are 10 years. And that is what I can present next time. I can't present any hard cost, it would be just based on those estimates. This is what I anticipate the new bid would be, but we won't know that until we actually go back out and say, make a choice, and then send it to them for, for rebid. So we wouldn't be bringing back a contract until May sometime.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, those in favor, signal up saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so we will, um, leave off 6C, I assume? We won't have a need for 6C? Okay, we'll move to 6D, Consider Approval of a Contract with the City of Nankodoches and USIC Locating Services LLC, and in amount not to exceed 125,000 to provide utility location services. Yes, sir.
Sir.
Mr. Smith.
Sorry, uh, Jason Smith, uh, Utility Construction Manager, Mayor, City Council. Um, sorry, I know Steve is not available today, um, and I'd like to apologize for the late delivery on the contract that I left for y'all. Uh, we have been working on this since the 20th of last month, and going back and forth in the review process between attorneys, and we finally got it at about 3:15, 3:30 this afternoon. So, as soon as I got it, we turned around and sent it back out. But unfortunately, it was just, just took a little while on the language. Um, let me get that item pulled up. So, the item here is, uh, related to the current requests for locating services of our water and sewer lines. All of y'all have seen the contractors, uh, around town, how many of them are doing work in pretty much every neighborhood all over the city. Uh, we have seen, uh, an increase of those locate requests up to, uh, last month, I believe I had around 420. Uh, and not only is it a number of requests, but it's also the length of those requests. So, in some of these, we're looking at small segments of city streets of a couple hundred feet. And then, I also have several that come in that are everything along the entire North Loop from Appleby Sand all the way around to University Drive. Well, that's a significantly larger area that we're talking about. And so that one locate request is, uh, 1,600 and some odd linear feet on one side, but they need both sides of the road marked. So those location requests become extremely arduous. They're long, long areas to be located. And we currently, uh, as the agenda item says, uh, we do have, uh, actually have hired one, uh, locator uh, that has come in here in the last couple of weeks, uh, to start the process of kind of clearing out and keeping up to date with the current location requests. But we are seeing a significant increase, of course, over the next several weeks. We, that's been forecast to us by. But we are seeing a significant increase, of course, over the next several weeks. We, that's been forecast to us by contractors. Just this week, uh, we were notified of eight main contractors that have their own crews. And under those eight main contractors, there are also seven additional subcontractors that are also starting to work in town. So, just right there, we have now fifteen contractors that are gonna be installing fiber optic lines and doing directional boring everywhere. So, those number of requests and length of footage are why we are starting to look at this process with USIC to come in. And take over those services of locating the main lines, locating as much of our infrastructure as possible. And having our own staff locators, more or less, manage those projects. Make sure that USIC is locating those facilities, assist them in locating taps and things that are not uh, as easy to find, right? I I don't need to have USIC's personnel in our office looking through our books, trying to find measurements on a single service on Blunt Street. I I need my people doing that. I need them out locating the fifteen thousand feet that they need around the loop, right? So, that's kinda the the balance of this process that we're looking at. The length of term of the contract uh, is showing as a one-year contract. That is the minimum length of term that USIC has uh, available. Mr. Kirkland and I have have kind of already gone over that that process. Of course, that's why the next item is for just the remainder of this year, not carrying over to the next year. So that we can then turn around and in our our budget for the twenty twenty-four year, that item will already be included in there to cover the remainder of that one-year contract. We are uh, also, of course, receiving additional requests, not just from the fiber optic companies, but also from the plumbers working for the homeowner who has a sewer blockage. And we are also doing the locate requests uh, for Longview Road and Bridge, jury construction. Every project that you see, there is some aspect of locating utilities that goes on. It it does take quite a quite a bit to keep up with that and to uh, manage and and continue that process and that service. Just today, I can tell you that there were three sewer taps that were hit that were marked in approximate locations, and that's three residents that are gonna be upset. Because their services have been interrupted. And the better we can do, the more effort we put into marking these utilities, keeping our infrastructure as protected as possible. I I think it's it's worth that effort to continue doing that. Do I have any questions about the the contract specifically? Like I said, I know it was kinda late getting here, but uh, I've I've reviewed a large portion of it. And I know Mr. Kirkland has also re-reviewed everything as well, so.
Jason, let me get public comment, and then we'll talk, go with counsel. Any comment on this item? Okay. Counsel, any one? Yep.
Yeah, a couple. And it's not specifically about the contract itself. Um, it has more to do with the accidental strikes that you were just talking about. I get what feels like a disturbing amount of calls and emails from from constituents about this. And it seems like every single time, it is a huge pain for them initially trying to coordinate um, repairs. And then for me to get involved and coordinating with city staff. And it seems like if we have these contractors out here, um, and they're, I mean, I know they're accidental strikes, but the reason that they're laying that fiber so that they can make money, right?
Absolutely.
Um, and then it's so difficult to get them to fix things that they break. Um, that's frustrating. And I I I wonder, one, I mean, I I, you said there was what, like fifteen, there's seven subcontractors or eight? Yeah. So, I I imagine that there are a lot of, you know, moving pieces to work with, but I just, a couple of questions. One, um, in your experience, do they one hundred percent of the time take care of the repair?
One hundred percent of the time, I cannot say that. Uh, all of the ones that I have been made aware of, yes, the contractor has taken care of those uh, damages. We, of course, make an effort to have people on site, but my main crews are also the ones that are out doing doing uh, repairs on water lines, sewer lines. Raising manholes, doing things like that. So, right now, I currently only have one employee that is trying to run around chasing these fifteen contractors all over town. And at the same time, also staying ahead of them and marking our utilities. So, um, tho- do they fall through the cracks? Absolutely, it does happen. There are a lot of these, especially when we're talking about a sanitary sewer line, a ser- service tap line strike. Those sometimes don't show up for several days, and so you may not even know that it has been damaged for a week. And then you call a plumber because the toilets won't flush, and now that contractor has moved three streets away from you. And so that that delay in time of getting them to come back and take care of that problem does does happen. It does occur. We have worked with the general contractors that are working directly under Vexis to try to keep, and I say Vexis, it's not only them. We also have Conterra, we also have AT&amp;T.
Vexis has been.
They they have been. They are the ones that have hit it, I will say, extremely hard, especially here over the last several months. So, you're seeing their trucks, you're seeing their crews that are doing their, the installation. But just last year, we had GTO Utilities who was here doing the same almost exact thing for AT&amp;T. So, today it's Vexis, last month it was AT&amp;T, next month it may be Conterra. And and so we we try to work with their general contractors that are over their crews to give us uh, the best information possible. Uh, also to uh, of where they're going to be working, how many feet they're going to be doing that day or that week. Trying to uh, also see areas where our water and sewer line infrastructure may be shallow, which is at the depth that they are uh, putting in these lines. Our main lines typically, uh, water line typical depth is three foot. It can be up to five foot deep. Your, you see your water meter at the surface, but that does not mean that that everything is near the surface, right? We uh, everything is below that. On our sewer system, uh, the majority of our lines are between five and eight foot of depth. And so that sewer service, of course, comes in at an elevation that 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 gets shallower as it gets to the curb line towards the house. And so you can be anywhere between two foot down to about four foot of depth where that service comes across. Unfortunately, that's the same depth that these phone lines are going in, is in that two foot to four foot of depth. And so that, uh, we try to work with those contractors to to locate those services, dig them up by hand so that they don't damage them in as many cases as we can. Of course, they're in a rush. They're trying to make their money by getting their footage. So, every time they they stop to dig up a sewer tap to verify its depth, of course, they're not getting the same amount of footage that they do. So, it's a, it's a balancing act, uh, to determine, you know, how many to find, uh, and then how many to risk uh, uh, being damaged and then have to go back and repair. We do try to do as much of that as possible, but we we are not managing their contracts. We don't really have a lot of say-so in in what they do and how they do it, but we try to make sure that they do take care of those issues for the residents.
And my complaint is not at all with city staff, just for clarification purposes. It is one hundred percent and solely with them. I just wonder if there's a way that we could streamline that repair process, at least on the city staff's side, so that it doesn't have to get. I I mean, I don't mind, that's part of the job is is, you know, taking that from from, but what I, what I think and what I'm trying to say is that it feels like a resident shouldn't have to try so hard and finally get to a city council member who will, you know, to 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 be able to get that repair.
Right.
I I mean, especially if they're, like, you know, like you said, they're in town to make their money.
Yes, they are.
Which is related to my second. It's not really a question, because if I turned it into a question, I think that it would be um, overly simplistic. You guys have worked very hard on this contract, and so um, I I trust that you have done your jobs well. So, I guess kind of a comment. It's strange to me that the entire financial burden of paying for for utility locating services falls on us when we're doing it to protect our infrastructure so that these private companies can make a ton of money.
Right, um, locating a facility, so the uh, USIC currently is doing location uh, services for um, Encore, Center Point, AT&amp;T. Trying to think, there's Sunlink, uh, and so each each company does pay the USIC a fee to locate their facilities. This contract, of course, would just be for water and sewer facilities, um, but it, that burden does fall on every utility. It it's not not just the city, not just the water. E- each each company does pay them a fee to come out and locate their their utilities as well. This is basically the economy of scale again of of, they're already there, they're already on site, locating your electric line, locating the other phone lines in front of your property. And so at the same time, I would like for them to locate the main water lines, the main sewer lines, and as many of the services and taps as possible. And then move on to the next one so that they can stay ahead. It it gives us access to uh, four to six contract employees essentially to keep up with those locating services. While our city staff can be more helpful to the residents in assisting in coordinating that effort of doing repairs. And and hopefully not allowing those things to go as as long as they are before getting repaired. And coordinating that service. We did have a discussion, uh, honestly, with with um, with Vexis directly uh, about doing repairs and the process of those repairs. City staff, of course, we do not have enough staff to be able to dedicate an entire crew to following all of these contractors around to do those repairs ourself and then turn around and bill that contractor. We we have had uh, several instances where um, the general contractor, uh, and again, it's it's a little hard to say all of that without telling you, you know, the names of the companies and and all of the subs that are underneath them. But uh, basically this, the general contractor, one of the general contractors working directly for Vexis, uh, when one of his subs uh, damaged a utility line, rather than have them do the repair while they're on site, he actually contacted a local plumber and had the local plumber come out and do those repairs. And of course, they covered the cost at at no expense. We have offered or allowed for those contractors to do some of their own repairs. If they already have the hole opened up and and dug up and they see that there was damage done, go ahead and repair it. We assist, we have provided parts to try to speed the process up, get people their service back. The ones that seem to have taken the longest have been primarily water service damages that have occurred behind the meter, not on the city's side of the service. The ones that are that are damaged on our side of the service, if the contractor cannot get it repaired immediately, my crews do step in. We fix the lines and the customer has service. Like I said, the ones that have lingered for for way too long, two to three days, uh, is what I've seen in a few cases, were on the PVC side after the meter. And unfortunately, as the city, we cannot even assist in doing repairs on that private side of an individual customer's service. That is something that has to be done either by the contractor that damaged it or by a licensed plumber. And so we're kinda limited again there, and that's where our staff, I think, can, with this contract in place, will have the additional time to step in and coordinate that effort and and make it better.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Any anybody else?
Just one question. Um, marking utilities. Is it common to have uh, utilities, uh, an error? Is it errors in records?
Yes, sir. Uh, most of our water lines and sewer lines were laid, uh, you know, from the forties all the way up through uh, the late sixties, early seventies, when the majority of the town was was kind of expanded and and grew. And those lines at that time were not put in the ground with any way to trace them. They were put in with material types that are not able to be hooked onto and 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 located. The actual individual water services being copper, yes, sir. We can locate them and we can get them dead on and know exactly where that is. Unfortunately, the line that it ties to is a material type that cannot be located. And so differences in um, in curb line versus the day we thought it, when it was constructed, where we thought the curb line was going to be versus where it was actually built, things do get shifted in construction. Very, as well as uh, depth information because of changing the depth of of uh, streets and and things like that, so. And on our wastewater side, uh, using clay tile or PVC, the one, none of those are locatable facilities. And the majority of the houses that have been constructed in in Nacogdoches prior to, actually around prior to the year two thousand, were not required to have a cleanout at the curb line. So, the only ones that have, that that you see that have a cleanout for their sewer service near the curb line are ones that have been built in the last ten years. Or have had an issue where it required them to have a cleanout added. And so probably eighty-five percent or more of the homes in Nacogdoches only have a cleanout in the backyard or at the front of the house inside the flower bed. And so it doesn't really tell you where it is when it crosses the the street. And and so it's truly unlocatable facilities is the way we refer to them.
Thank you.
It's a best guess, unfortunately.
Anything? Okay, do I have a motion on six D?
I move that we approve agenda item six D as written.
Second.
Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And I think he's already explained six E. That would be the money required for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-three. Do I have a motion on six E?
I move that we uh, approve the budget amendment um, in item six E as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, that takes us through our agenda. Thank you, Jason, and to uh, to the point for an executive session.
To deliberate regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section five five one point oh eight seven, and we'll go to executive session at seven eighteen. Thanks for returning from executive session uh, at seven thirty P M. We deliberated regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section five fifty-one point oh eight seven. We have no action. This meeting's adjourned.